That's not right.
Called account, called order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, June twenty first, twenty twenty two, meeting to order, Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
Here.
All right, welcome all four of you this morning. Uh, first day of summer, I guess everybody's out there celebrating summer solstice and uh, anybody watching at home that doesn't have anything else to do, welcome. We have pretty light agenda this morning. Um, first item is the approval of contract amendment. Mr. Lang.
Good morning. Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Brockwell, James Brockwell got in touch uh, last month about the cost increase to dispose of the wastewater sludge. So he requested um, an increase in the contract amount and that will require board approval. So that's why we're here this morning. He requested it to be effective July one.
Twenty six cents a gallon?
Yes, it's the total, not the increase, so.
So when does his current contract end?
His current cr- contract is good through uh, twenty twenty four, I believe.
But I'm sure it's a stipulation in that contract and cost, he can request.
Has, yes, has to be approved by the board.
Yeah.
You know, service has been great. Um, he's definitely our preferred provider and um, you know, just like everything else, his costs are increasing accordingly, so.
Anybody haven't, Mr.?
Uh, is it mainly because of the cost of fuel has gone up so much?
Uh, well, he's charging us a fuel surcharge as well, while the fuel cost is uh, is up. That would go away if fuel costs come back down, but this is uh, direct, his direct disposal cost at HRSD. So um, this will not go back down, I can almost guarantee.
So how much is the increase?
The increase is only uh, two cents per gallon.
Two cents a gallon.
And they're not our um, first choice for disposal, so um, you know, it doesn't impact every load, but we do need to uh, get the contract amendment.
Anybody else? Ms. Page?
We don't seem to have a choice, I have a moment.
I move to authorize county administrator to sign a contract amendment with Brockwell's septic in service.
Thank you, Ms. Page, is there any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Steers. Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you all, have a good day.
You too. Next Cumberland Marsh kayak and canoe launch, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Last fall, uh, staff presented an opportunity to you to um, partner with the Nature Conservancy to construct a kayak and canoe launch on the Plum Monkey River on a preserve area that's owned by the Nature Conservancy. Um, we've discussed um, putting this out to bid, uh, to get a contractor for the work, uh, which we've done in uh, December of last year, the end of December, we issued a design build request for proposals in which we received three responses uh, from Bay Design Group, Howard Brothers Contractor and Harbor Dredge and Dock. Um, our review team, which consists of myself, uh, our Assistant County Administrator, our Parks and Recreation Director, and our General Services Director reviewed the three proposals and selected Howard Brothers Contractor and Harbor Dredge and Dock to move forward with for the second phase of the design build process. The second phase involved uh, submitting a technical and cost proposal, which you have in your packets. After review of those proposals, um, our review team has selected Howard Brothers Contractor um, as the top proposal. Their overall cost was four hundred and seventy one thousand, one hundred and four dollars, which was much more, uh, which is much more than we had anticipated for this, this project. Therefore, I'm here today asking for some direction as to whether we move forward um, with the project or we do not move forward with the project. I estimate and I've budgeted in ca- in the event we do move forward, uh, that we appropriate five hundred and fifteen thousand and that just gives us some contingencies. And with the proposal you'll see from the Howard Brothers, there are some options also, um, that some we would like to move forward and there are some things in the original quote that I think we can move without, like some of the paving of the trails. I think we can work with the gravel trail that would reduce about sixteen thousand dollars. Um, but there is um, additional decking material that we would prefer to move forward with, which would add another thirty two thousand dollars. So we're right around five hundred thousand dollars total project cost, um, and I'm requesting an additional fifteen thousand as a contingency if we decide to move forward. The Nature Conservancy has reviewed um, the technical and cost proposal. Um, they're on board moving forward with the project if the county does decide to do that. Um, the next step would be for us to um, work out and drag, develop an agreement with the Nature Conservancy uh, for the use of their property. Um, and then we'll work on an agreement with the Howard Brothers Construction. One more comment. Oh, um, as far as the five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, where that would come from if we moved forward? Um, we do have that in our um, capital reserves, I believe, as I've stated in our staff report. We had a one point four million set aside for an HVAC project at the courthouse and it's probably a good time to give you an update on that, a quick update. Uh, we've recently received proposals for that, um, and the lowest proposal was two point five million uh, for that. Um, and what escalated the cost was the requirement of having to work around contractor's schedule. There are still some unknowns in the project as far as how we handle the holding cells, uh, which are in the courthouse. Um, and because of the unknowns and uncertainty, I, I don't believe we got a real proposal and we only received one bid for, for that, that project. Therefore, we're looking at a plan B, which is to simply replace some of the existing units and upgrade what we currently have. We won't have to do any duck work, which won't interrupt uh, courts. Um, and we anticipate hopefully that that will give us another five to seven years, but that will be a considerably less cost uh, than the replacement of the existing system, the entire system. So we have money within that line item to fund this, this project.
Question? Yes, sir, Mr. Tiller. Is replacing the units, I mean, is that a, what's the right word, viable way to go to? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, to me, it's not the ideal system because we know that we have an HVAC system over there that was poorly designed, well, not just old, but poorly designed for that type of use. Uh, you basically have a residential system uh, trying to keep up with the commercial load and because of that, we're having a lot of issues um, with that existing system. Uh, the, the design was bad from the beginning. Now, there are some things though, that we believe we can do, like, right now, all of the systems are on one side of the building. Um, the side where the circuit court clerk is, which creates issues because of the length of the run for the other side of the building and the system is working much harder than it has to. We are going to remove some of those units and place them on the other side of the building, which should help out on the general district court side. Um, and we won't have to change any duck work. Um, and some of those units currently are, are pretty much on life support. Um, so some of them do need to be replaced, but we're looking at a, a lot less of a cost than the total redesign with new duck work and, and everything. You know, one of the directions that we received from the courts was, you know, they didn't have a lot of flexibility to rearrange court schedules. Um, initially, we had asked if they could conduct their courts and other courts in nearby jurisdictions, since those judges, they are in several jurisdictions and uh, that was not an option, it was not approved, uh, it's not something that they can do. Um, and then there's the whole issue of the contractors having to work around the court schedules, meaning the work had to be in nights and weekends, which definitely drives up the cost. Um, and honestly, we haven't found a workaround yet to deal with the holding cells. I mean, that's a concrete enclosure uh, that we would have to do significant work in, we'd have to bust up that concrete to get new ducks in, um, which would not allow us to use them. So we haven't found a workaround for that yet either.
Mr. Chair? I know, I, I don't want to pretend I'm HVAC engineer or anything, but have, have we looked at like mini splits for the units that are difficult to run duct work? And I mean, it's, they seem to be used almost everywhere anymore. Um, they're really inexpensive and very energy efficient and, you know, especially when you have difficulties where duct work isn't an option, I mean, it's.
That, that is actually one of the things that we were looking at for the holding cells. We looked at many splits for the clerks offices, um, but that wasn't a viable option for our engineer, basically because of the size of the area and the way that it was cut up. Um, many sp- splits weren't a viable option for the clerks and, and judges' chambers where we had explored that.
So, Mr. Jim.
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's, I'm a little crazy, but I wanted to talk about this kayak and canoe launch. Um, so is this launch, can they also um, put boats out?
No, this is simply for kayak and canoes.
So, um, for me, I think the better option is to find an area where we can, what do you call them? Public boat landings?
Mm-hmm.
Because then canoes and kayaks can be maybe put out there too.
Well, this, this, this would be for kayaks and canoes only, but if you wanted a full public boat landing where you could put motorized boats too, um, I don't know, that's something we can.
That's not, that place, they're inapplicable for that.
Right, no, it's not.
You just can't get to this, you just go on through a marsh.
It's a marsh.
You can't get your boat to the water without, you've got to drop right at the water.
It would, it would be my thought that we would, that we would, um, we would look for, as spending a half a million dollars, we would look for a landing that would serve the majority of our, our citizens.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we're looking at spending a half a million dollars for, you know, uh, it, I'm sure it, a beautiful area and, and I would say to Mr. Hathaway that if you, you might as well stay with the asphalt trail because trying to drag a kayak trailer or something through a, it's a, it's a long walk. I mean, that's significantly further back than I realized when we started talking about this, so, I mean, you're, that's a hike with a boat and all your gear and to try and drag it across asphalt would just not be feasible, I mean, across gravel.
I agree with that.
You'd be too tired to go out on the boat by the time you got it there, or at least I would.
Yeah, 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 that, that, that was actually a, a request from the Nature Conservancy, just trying to
lessen the impact.
Do less impact as possible to, to the environment, but I'm sure we could have.
Is there any, anything from them to contribute to this project since we're going to be dropping a half a million dollars on their property?
No.
I mean, any kind of grants or any, I mean, it, to me, this is really a lot more expensive than we had initially talked about and it, it really puts it in the realm of hard to justify
Sure.
on somebody else's property for us to make that kind of investment. And I know a couple of people that would love to have it, but I just don't know that we can justify a half a billion dollars on something that's not ours.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I, I don't believe the Nature Conservancy has any funding available for this, but from time to time, there is. There are grant opportunities with, through DCR, uh, it just all depends on the state budget and what's available for that, that year and that's something we can continue to, to keep an eye out for.
I'd like to see us, if we're going to invest in something like, that, that kind of price ticket, we ought to be looking at, at being on county-owned property.
I don't know if it's county-owned or.
Or.
But I would like to see something where the majority of our citizens can use instead of going to another county or another location to launch their boats, because we have a lot of boats in the county, so, um, we might have a lot of canoes for all I know, but.
I'm sure we do and we'd probably be bringing a lot of people in that would want to take advantage of it, it's just, you know, it very, it is very exclusive in its use. It's not like a, you know, a park setting with this in addition to it, so um, your access to the water is going to be limited to just what we put in, so.
Yeah, but, but the price really kind of surprised all of us, we weren't anticipating uh, that it would come in at, at this cost, but you know, construction is up and uh, what we didn't take into account at the beginning was the ADA requirements. Because of the ADA requirements, if you look at the picture that I'm showing you.
Just the trailer?
Slope, uh, you're having to build a, a pretty long structure. It's not just building straight down to the water.
I'd like to see us put this on hold and, and it, and maybe pursue some grants that might come up to, you know, make it a little easier pill to swallow.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I tend to agree, I don't know how many of our citizens are interested in getting kayaking or canoeing. And I previously mentioned about maybe looking at the State Forestry Department to maybe put in a full boat launch and state park kind of setting over there, has anybody done anything with that?
Well, I think that that's the perfect location, I mean, it's a wide area of, of the chick, it's, it's, it's a very beautiful area. Uh, the problem is Forest, the Department of Forestry, um, that might be something we need to talk to our state representatives about, uh, because I could tell you the forestry has no interest in uh, working with us for a boat program.
Crawford?
I know, uh, the State Forestry Center where we've had retreats.
Oh, oh, oh.
If you go all the way to the back, um, there's a nice area on, on the chick.
Well, you know, there's.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Perfect.
Well, you know, that's where, you know, they're, they're planning on opening that, I know we're getting off top, off topic, but they're looking at reopening that forested land. Uh, they put in the state budget this year, so DOF is going to be back down there operating, growing pine trees again. But that's, that's, that's more access to the Chickahommy, which we have access, the Taylors and stuff, but I just, just to be frank, there's not a whole lot of access to the Plum Monkey, it's just not, not there, so, and I do know a lot of people that do kayak and canoe, but it is a big, a big.
It must be young.
A big chunk. It's a big price tag, that's for sure, I didn't realize it would come in that much. But it, I don't know where you're, where on the monkey, if you could find a public boat landing, the closest one is that, uh, I don't, that's private. Uh, Williams up there, up river, and then like, they got some on a King William side and then two or three and then West Point, on the Mad for now. So I guess it's the consensus of the board to try to ask staff to reach out, look for some grants and see if we can get some help on this project, is that fair to say?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hathaway.
Thank you.
Next Plum Point Neighborhood Stormwater Drainage Project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Back in early two thousand, I believe it was two thousand one or two thousand two, um, the county received a community development block grant uh, for the renovation of about twenty homes in the Plum Point community. Part of the requirements of that grant was that we could only renovate homes that were on public roads. Not sure for the reason for that requirement, but that, that was the reason, that, that was a requirement of the grant. Therefore, the county actually had to take a private owner of several roads in the Plum Point area to court uh, to gain ownership. Um, and that's why today the county owns a portion of Old Furry Road, um, I can't think of the road parallel to Old Furry. Matter, Point Lookout, um, Matter Penai and, and I think there's a couple of others, um, roads. It's, it's because of that community development block grant. I've recently reached out to um, VDOT and asked if they would consider a portion of Old Furry Road, uh, taking that into the state maintenance system through their rural addition program. Um, while that went, it serves a lot of homes, um, because that's the access point to those newer homes in um, Plum, in the Plum Point community off of Merlin Avenue and Georgia, those roads out there. Um, VDOT inspected the road and they saw standing water along the side, along the sides of, of the road, which is an issue that we've known about for some time and we've received some complaints uh, from property owners in the area too. When they get heavy rains, um, the water basically is up to their foundation. Um, VDOT has told us in order for that road to be accepted into the rural additions program, the county would have to address the drainage issue first. I've reached out to Bowman and, Bowman Consultants uh, for a call soon in engineering and design to come up with a solution for the, for the drainage. Um, and they've given me an estimate of forty three thousand dollars, that's the exact, and I did, because of the way they gave me the estimate, I've requested in the motion today up to fifty thousand dollars. What they did is they gave me hourly rates uh, for surveying at eighteen fifty per day. They're estimating that it'll take about three days of surveying and they gave me an hourly rate for the engineering, which they estimate approximately fifteen hours uh, for this work. And because they gave me approximates, I've, I've added um, a few thousand for contingency to not exceed fifty thousand dollars in the motion. But their cost was actually forty three thousand dollars. Um, this will help out, again, as I've mentioned, us get Old Furry Road into the state system, so it's no longer um, a maintenance issue for county, which we do maintain all of those roads in Plum Point. Uh, we try to at least dress them up twice a year, um, but sometimes mainly due to weather conditions, um, we're getting um, inquiries from the residents and we have to go in there more often, so it is an operating cost for us. Um, but it'll also address the flooding issues that the ex- um, homeowners in that area are experiencing as, as well.
If I have any comments?
Question? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. T. Um, so if we eliminate the drainage issues, VDOT will take over the roads at that point?
Well.
I mean, is that?
They will actually.
Done deal?
That road will then be able to access rural addition funds, which is a VDOT program uh, that VDOT would use to upgrade the road to state standards and then, yes, it would come into, of the state system.
So, small investment for us?
Yes.
Possibly a good return if we don't have to maintain the roads anymore, okay.
And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, one more thing, um, as far as the funding that I'm requesting, uh, we currently have a pot of funding, um, and it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that pot of funding right now, which comes from the revenue that we've, are receiving from the homes that, that we have rehabbed. Uh, it's, it, it's not a free program, it wasn't a free program to the homeowners that had homes rehabbed. They do have to pay us for a portion of that cost and that portion is based on their income. So we have received income from renovating those homes and that pot right now is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and I would recommend utilizing that funding uh, for the engineering and design.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So, um, this, this fifty thousand is just for the design?
Yes.
So do we know, so we have to wait until we get the design back to know the cost to bring the roads up? So, do we know, so we have to wait until we get the design back to know the cost to bring the roads up? So that VDOT will even consider taking them under the rural plan or the pub, uh, the public road plan?
Yes, that, that is the purpose of, of, of doing the engineering and design and. You know, I don't have a good idea, a good estimate of, of what the solution will be. There's a couple of options out there and it's all about moving water. And there's a couple of different routes that, that we can move the water, so I, I, I don't have a good idea right now.
So, once we get the costs, then we can possibly revise our request to CVTA. To help with funding?
Yes.
Cause I know we, I think we have a request in, we just need to, I think it's almost time to revise them or put in new requests.
Well, we, this would not be eligible for the regional funds. But it would be eligible for the local CVTA funds.
Yeah, now I'm not asking for, cause I know the, the regional has got to, it's got to be leveraged for, for smart scale. But for air fund, we still submit what we think we're going to use money for, so just to revise that plan to give to them.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
If, if I'm not mistaken, that was part of our list when we originally set that up, it was this one and.
It was Point Lookout, I think.
Yep. Well, just curious, Mr. Hathaway. Would we be maybe coming out a little better if we did an RFP for a design build and have. The contractor do the engineering or, you know. That way one party's responsible from start to finish. As opposed to an engineer's plan versus what the contractor has to do and. Kind of the same problem we ran into at Pine Fork Park with some of the engineering, so. Sorry to bring that up.
I think the only thing we lose in that scenario, I, I don't know if we've come out better financially. Cause we're still paying for the engineering through design and build and, and we'll be paying for construction too. Only thing we probably lose is time. Because we have on-call contracts that are already in place, it's just a matter of me signing the work authorization and they're out there doing the engineering. We can get that ramped up pretty quickly. Going the RFP route, you know, we'd have to put the RFP together and then at least give three weeks. I think two weeks, but we usually give three weeks to accept proposals and then it just puts us out probably about.
Well, based on the calls that I get from my friends at Plum Point, I'm all about reducing the timeline if possible, but. That road, Old Ferry is definitely in desperate need of repair, I mean, it's been, it has been maintained by the county. And it, it takes a couple of days after they dress it out for it to be a problem again because of. You know, people going from a paved road to a gravel road back to a paved road, it's just, I mean, ruts like crazy, so. I think it would be in our best interest long-term to have that turned over to the state. Do what we need to do to get that done and not to mention the people that are dealing with the flooding issues that happen every time we get a bad rain, so. It would definitely alleviate a lot of problems there, so I'd like to see us move forward with it.
How good, how good a feel do you have from VDOT that once we do the engineering that they'll step up to the plate, is there any commitment?
You know, the, the, the rural addition program has been around for a long time and it is funded. So, there are funds available for that, so I, I, I have a good, good feel about it. We actually have used rural addition before. Most recently, I can't, it's off of Cooks Mill Road where we brought that road into the system, that's something furry as well, I think. Sweet Hall, old Sweet Hall Road, so I, I have a good feel.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockwood.
If there's no further discussion. I move to authorize the county administrator to execute a work authorization with Bowman and Associates. For an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for engineering and design work. For stormwater drainage improvements in the Plum Point neighborhood. The fund shall, shall be appropriated from the CDBG Plum Point Program Income Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood, is there any other discussion? If none, Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Ms. Page. Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. Any other business? Rebecca's getting tired over there, I see her yawnin'.
I, I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
What do we do with employees that don't have sense enough not to come to work on a holiday?
Or on weekends, do we do anything with them? We, we got a couple, we got a few sitting in this room, they just don't know how to stay at home. Yeah, they thought I wasn't going to ride through the parking lot and see if there was his. Mr. Chair, I have no more questions.
Alright. Do you want to talk?
I'd like to go into closed session. I'll make it real quick. Three minutes, John.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into closed session pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one eight point three. Of the Code of Virginia for Discussion Regarding the Acquisition of Real Property for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Where discussion in the open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood, Ms. Lockwood, we poll the members.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye, we'll be going into closed session, but we'll not, we won't be taking the action after we come out on anything.